Could you have a, would you want it to table please? To the table. We have a hard stop at seven, if not six forty. Dodgers game, that game starts at six forty. Absolutely, that's the goal. And we have some board members missing this evening. And several other board members will have to leave by six o'clock, if not even before that, so. The first part of the work session, which has to do with the budget, will be managed by esteemed the Budget Chair, Mrs. Megan McLaughlin. I don't know why I'm talking.
Because I've.
Okay, now she's gonna, she's.
Mr. Moon, as you, as you know, our role as school board members is to also help our constituents. And when there's a time-sensitive emergency, I'm working with the Regional Superintendent on it. I knew it was in capable hands for you to kick things off, so.
You know, I'm the Vice Chair, so yeah, whatever I can do for you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moon.
I'm at your disposal.
That's greatly appreciated. So hopefully, more of our school board colleagues will be joining us momentarily. But we do have a quorum here of seven, so we will go ahead and get started with this budget work session. Ms. Burden, our CFO, and Marty Smith, our COO, the two of you will walk us through the PowerPoint presentation. And to my colleagues, as I shared in an email earlier today, the goal is to be able to review the overall feedback that Mr. Moon and I, as Chair and Vice Chair, were able to collect with staff from our two-by-two school board member communications surrounding budget priorities for the upcoming fiscal '21 budget development process. So without further ado, Ms. Burden.
Good evening, or afternoon. The work session agenda is exactly what it says here. We're gonna do a quick overview of the two-by-two discussions, show some information about progress in teacher salaries, overall total cost of teacher compensation, some of the signature investments that have been made over the last four years. And after this short presentation, the bulk of the work session, we're planning on that being discussion among school board members as far as what their priorities might be for fiscal '21. And the budget development process is well underway. As you know, the Superintendent meets with any advisory groups to get their thoughts and prepares a needs-based budget while incorporating school board priorities and linkage with the strategic plan. FY '21 kicked off with two-by-twos with the school board to get their thoughts on budget priorities. This next chart represents the major topics discussed. Am I supposed to be turning, okay, I never know that I'm supposed to be clicking. Okay, thank you. This list represents the major topics discussed by school board members in the two-by-two meetings, with some examples of the specific areas of interest following. We defined the top as being more than two members identified that topic as one of their top three. So I'll give you a second to look at that. We can come back to it, though. Since compensation was the most frequently cited priority, I thought I would provide some additional information about salaries. This chart illustrates how much progress has been made over the past four years. This data represents the MA lane, which is the majority of the teacher workforce reside at, at nearly 60 percent. The red line is where we started in fiscal '17, ranging from $53,384 to $98,769. The purple line is fiscal '18, which ranges from $53,707 to $98,875. The yellow line represents fiscal '19, with an MA starting salary of $55,000 going up to $99,304. And the blue line is fiscal '20 this current year, when the range is $55,000 to $100,297. We met our goal this year of having the teacher salaries ranging from 95% to 105% of the market, which is the green line, and is $56,279 to $104,378. This next chart is one that you're more familiar with, and represents the 30-year career earnings for FCPS, fiscal '17, '18, '19, and '20, and the fiscal '20 market average. We use the original comparator divisions, which is Alexandria-Arlington, Loudon-Prince William, DC, Montgomery County, and Prince George's. And if you use the original comparator divisions, we run above-average at the BA levels and below-average at MA and above. Note that only 24% of our teachers have less than a master's degree, with 76% having a master's degree or higher. This chart represents the 30-year career earnings of FCPS '17 through '20 and the fiscal '20 Virginia market average, which basically means it includes Alexandria-Arlington, Loudon, and Prince William. We don't typically include the other WABE divisions like Manassas City, Manassas Park City, Falls Church, just because they're so small. Sometimes we do, but for these purposes, we just use the large Virginia divisions. So if you look at how we compare to the Virginia neighboring divisions only, we look good at the BA level. And we are at the, at 101.1% there. And the MA and above are also above 100%. Only the BA 15 is not 100%, that's at 98.6. Arlington pays at the, pays those with the BA 15 at the BA 30 level. Prince William doesn't have, doesn't differentiate BA 15 and BA 30. Alexandria doesn't, and so that kind of skews the averages, because those divisions don't have the BA 15. Arlington mostly pushes everybody else below the average. We thought you also might want to see how we compare in employee benefits, although honestly, it is very difficult to compare employee benefits, because every division has different plan designs for healthcare. It's not like it was back in the day, when everybody had an indemnity plan, and they were essentially all the same plans regardless of what vendor you had. Nowadays, you know, some divisions have wealthier plans, some, you know, it's, co-pays could be $10, $20, $30. All of those plan design changes, especially prescription or RX, have the ability to impact what your healthcare costs. But be that as it may, this chart shows the employer costs of a teacher position using the actual FCPS average teacher salary and accompanying benefits. And then our ranking based on that same calculation for WABE divisions. The WABE tries to make this as comparable as possible by using actual average teacher salaries, and then calculating the cost of benefits that are a percentage of that salary, and dictating that everyone report their, the same healthcare plan, like family plan with, you know, that has your highest participation, or family plan, your most expensive plan. And so we try to make it as comparable as possible, but it's still not, not gonna be an exact science. We rank third primarily, when you include employee benefits, because the average salary for Arlington and Montgomery County are 5,400 and 7,200 higher than the average salary for Fairfax. The reason, though, that we still fall third is because we compare very favorably because of our ERFC plan. No other division has a local retirement plan in addition to VRS. And you can see that the value of that plan is $4,736 in fiscal '19. So that is a big distinction between what Fairfax offers and the other divisions. This last chart represents the signature investments made between fiscal '17 and fiscal '20. I categorized the increases offset by decreases in the early years to determine the total cost. A school board initiative to increase teacher salaries to 95% to 105% of the market average means that has been our primary focus the past four years, with 384 million of the investment over the past four years going to compensation. No surprise there, that's about 88% of our net four-year increase, which is about the same percentage as salaries and benefits make up the annual budget each year. We also categorized by instructional programs, enrollment class size, staffing, equity and student services, and then other, like utilities, contract increases, so that the net four-year increase was 437 million. So finally, we hope to determine today, what areas do you all believe are critical? And hopefully, you all will be able to have a robust discussion and determine some consensus on what the priorities are. Last thing is budget calendar, just because we put that in front of you every time we talk to you. That's it.
I guess, Dr. Brabran.
I could, just want to add before, and Ms. Burden just did an outstanding presentation. Thank you, Ms. Burden, and your team for putting this together. We're busy now, meeting with all of our departments to better understand their budget needs. But of course, as we're doing that, this is a chance to take your two-by-two conversations and now have a larger conversation to hear about your budget priorities, so thank you.
Let me first call on Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then I have Ms. Evans. And then I see Ms. Strauss and Ms. Kies-Gamaro.
First, I want to thank the Budget Chair and Vice Chair, as well as staff, for actually involving us earlier on in the budget process. I think this is wonderful, it's a great system improvement, so thank you very much for that. Couple of questions and just a comment. As far as the questions, the biggest one being the comparator of salary and benefits. Am I to understand that the reason that Arlington is higher is because of, even though they may provide less benefits, they have a slightly higher salary, which gives them just $1,000 more?
Yes.
Okay.
Their average salary is about $5,400 more than Fairfax's is. And that's, that's pretty typical.
It's a smaller system.
It is a smaller system, but also, when you undertake a focus on compensation, the average salary, which is essentially just total payroll divided by the total number of teachers, it takes a while for that dial to move on the average. Even though, you know, we've been adding resources to that over the last four years, it'll take a while for the average to change.
Yeah, I think that's excellent. And then just as far as priorities going forward, I note that we don't have on here restraint and seclusion, and I would presume that as we move forward, we are going to ideally address the very real concerns of our community in this area. And so I think we need to have, at a minimum, a placeholder to be able to address that. Because we know that our community, as do many of our board members, including myself, have concerns at this point. The second piece is, I want to make sure that we continue to invest in our instructional assistance in getting their salary up. So I know we made that commitment last year, but I'm reaffirming it. The third is the need to make a strategic investment in our major maintenance, and begin to doing, begin doing that going forward as a percentage. Most organizations actually take a percentage of their cost of operations, and they put that as a placeholder for major maintenance. And so I would like to see that. I am very glad to see the dropout prevention priority there. And then my last is that I would love to see something on, and I presume the staffing standards is going to address needs-based staffing as well. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Evans?
I thank you, I too want to thank you all for the conversations. I think this was great to get us all thinking along these lines very, very early in the process. I had one question and then a couple of comments. From the chart, it looks like the beginning teacher salaries is still not at market, is that correct? I had, I had thought it was, and if I'm, are we doing the three minutes? I'll keep going. Oh, okay. So that's my one question. As far as my, my comments, I would, well, actually, I have other questions, which is that there were a couple of things that we had, several, several items as follow-on motions in the last budget, and I would like to get a status update on those. Ms. McLaughlin and I had a follow-on motion on extracurricular activities, and I would love to see what, where we are with that, and what the current thinking is on that issue, as well as, like Ms. Corbett Sanders, the revised elementary school staffing formula, when we're, when we're due to see that and review that. So I guess at this point, I may want to go back, but at this point, those are the three areas that I wanted to focus on, on this round.
Was your, was your first question about the beginning master's line?
That slide five, it, it, it looks to me, if I'm seeing the green line versus the blue line properly, it looked like the, the market is a little, that we're not quite at market, but am I misreading that line?
No, that's correct for step one. We're at $55,000 in fiscal '20 for a MA step one, and the market average is $56,279 for MA step one. But that's not, that, I mean, I wasn't surprised by that at all, because I think the focus over the last four years has been that SAG in the middle that we had.
Correct.
And so the, that, there's still a little bit of a differential at that step one.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that clarification, because this line looks a lot better than the line did in years past.
Yes, it does.
I still, it would be great, however, if our beginning salaries were, were, were higher. But then I have the other two questions as well. One was on follow-up to our follow-on motions from the last budget, particularly the extracurricular activity piece and the elementary school staffing. Where those stands.
We're working on them. I actually sent out the list of all the follow-ons to all of the LT members just about a week, 10 days ago, asking them what the status was, but we haven't received all the responses yet on that. So we can take that as a next-step question and get back with you on that.
I do want to give some, Ms. Evans, some context. Like you said, or was said earlier, we're doing, we're engaging the board earlier than ever in the budget process. I mean, Francisco is already crunching numbers with Bill Kern, with ideas. We just don't have it ready for prime time yet, but we certainly will and can work, you know, to figure out in the board's schedule how you want to see that information, certainly around the equity piece, and looking at the, you know, the information you got last year, the high and lows of the gate receipt. I will tell you, generally, we're looking at, we've been intrigued where, say for like Title I and for instructional supplies, that we have a per-pupil fee, right? And how could you create a per-per pupil fee around extracurricular supports that could be given directly to schools? Not fee, not a fee.
A stipend.
A stipend, sorry. A per-pupil allocation that we give to schools, say for instructional materials or instructional supplies. I think it's, I don't know off the top of my head, and that's why maybe I shouldn't even, I'll just use a number.
The fees got me, I was like.
Yeah, yeah, not fees, allocation of dollars, like, say it's $6 per kid for textbooks, $4 for supplies, creating something around that for extracurricular activity support. The other one, on the staffing formulas, we're looking at all the staffing formulas. We're meeting with all the departments to see what their needs are and how they mesh with the formulas that we have. We have over 30 formulas that drive different aspects of staffing in our system. So part of this is figuring out, and I know your focus has been elementary, but as we're unpacking it, we've got 30 formulas to really review and try to come up with the best strategy to dig into them. We're certainly gonna look at elementary, and we hope, again, we hope, and we'll have something for you just later on, it's just still a little early, but our teams are deeply working in, looking at some formulas that have not been looked at in over 25 years.
And a clarification, we have over 100 staffing standards and 30 for special education.
Okay, I have Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Kies-Gamaro.
Thank you. This actually was one of the slides I wanted to return to. I asked sort of a whole bunch of questions, and you can answer them. Is a little more information on the green, the FY '20 market average? Because you had said we were at the average, so I don't understand that last piece there. The other one, where I think we've, a lot of us talked about equity of opportunity, and stipends and sports, fine arts, performing arts, because it's, it all, I understand, is, they all really need to be looked at. Many years ago, we created a warehouse storage situation where people could trade off furniture during the summer, that was a, I don't know if we still do that, but it's sort of, schools able to, I know in performing arts, schools able to warehouse all of their pieces, they would save money, and then they could share a lot of their stuff, particularly for our high-need schools, that it's harder for them to do that kind of piece. And I know we do it with furniture. And so, at any rate, that, that would be an interesting equity of opportunity. And sharing of resources and equipment, so that people can, when they don't need it, they get, they have a place to put it, and then other, getting to share with other schools. The, the last piece is, it's not, not just dropout prevention, but providing more flexible programs for our oldest SCIF students. I know we've talked about that a lot, I don't know if that's a budget item, a planning item, an adult ed, you know, sort of all of those pieces. So I don't know if that needs more money. I know we have issues with the state in giving us more flexibility in accreditation standards, but certainly looking at that, students who come to us at '16, '17, '18, and very much need to go to work. And just a quick comment, I love the adult ed camps for kids during vacation. I, I was really pleased to see that. Okay, so let's go back to my questions, and it's starting with the bright green market average piece.
Yeah, and if you go to the very next chart, you'll see why that is. We're only 97.3%.
Okay, all right, so that's what that refers to, all right, thank you.
At the top, so.
And if I might add, we also built the scales that way, because we wanted to compensate for ERFC. We noted that we, our teachers felt that they wanted more of that compensation at the beginning of their career, and so as you worked toward the end of your career, we felt that in terms of retention, as a retention tool, ERFC would be a greater retention tool. So that was based on feedback from all of our teachers. If you remember during the compensation study, we had focus groups, surveys, and so we built that into the scales.
And let me clarify too, only because I don't want to, I don't know, some of you may be confused. I referred to the 97.3, which is the PhD line. And the reason that is also the response to the previous chart, and why it looks like that at the top of the scale, even though this just represents MA, is because the scales build on each other. So we know, but that, that the top of the scale, we're not reaching the market average, because they build across the scale. So even though the previous chart is talking about the PhD when it says 97.3, it's because they build across the scale.
Okay. And then my last piece is ability to warehouse supplies that can be shared among schools.
Well, we could certainly, I know that as Dr. Brabran shared, that Dr. Duran is working currently on many different solutions for equity in terms of access and opportunity. So we can certainly share that and see if there are opportunities for us to create that kind of warehousing for those kinds of.
Because schools would like to share, but they have no place to put the stuff. And I know they've been looking for two years.
And, and when we think about our own warehouse space, it's where, space is also one of those things that we're looking for as well, so.
I know, so.
But we can certainly take a look at that.
When you know the warehouse, thanks.
Ms. Strauss, I want to just say back, because you asked about stipends. Francisco, Dr. Duran, is working with Bill Kern to relook at all of our stipends compared to the market, and just our whole structure support up to support fine arts and extracurricular and co-curricular programs. We haven't looked at that in years, are there things that we can be doing to better support those programs, and that's part of the department review that I was talking about, that we're undergoing now. For the first time in years, some people say it's never been done. We are sitting around with the whole team and all the departments and directors, and they're explaining their budget, they're justifying where they are and how it aligns to strategic plan priorities. So it's been a great chance for them to feel like they're being heard for the first time, and maybe a better chance even for senior leadership to really dive into a deeper discussion about how their current budget and what their requests are, are merging with strategic plan priorities. So I think that's going to help us some. You also mentioned the issue about dropout. Dropout is one of the things on there. We are looking at what we can do, we have a leadership team problem of practice that's going on. It's three of our leadership teams. Before, we spent 15 minutes on 50 topics. We've completely redesigned leadership team, we're spending two and three hours on one topic. We're bringing totally people out in the field in to give us data that we sit around and dig into and try to problem-solve on dropout. I've also asked the state superintendent, there were three appeals that we made, we got a form letter from the state, I said that's not acceptable, and I got in writing today, we are gonna get a full detailed explanation about the dropout indicator, and I'm gonna use that explanation as I go to the State Board of Education and ask for regulatory relief or some flexibility about the way the dropout indicator is currently being defined. It is absolutely discriminating against our limited English proficient kids, trying to cram in all of this graduation requirements in such a short period of time. And we don't want to penalize the kids or the school districts that welcome those kids with open arms. So we're busy on that part, both for the budget piece, but also for some policy piece, and we'll be sharing that with the board once, once we have.
Right, because I know members in the General Assembly are also very interested in that.
Yes, absolutely, and, and as soon as we have it, again, we have two more weeks, but we're busy at it. We have a meeting next week, and I'm going to use Dr. Lane's letter, which I'll be glad to share with you when I get it, with the additional detail that can help us really plan. And we want to partner together, we want to partner with them. We're not talking about moving away from accountability, but we want to be sure we're not unfairly penalizing the kids or the schools and school districts that support them and the community, so.
Great, thank you.
And Ms., if I could just clarify, because I saw some confused looks, so let me just give you real numbers. At the, on the MA scale, at the top of the scale, Fairfax is at 102.97. The average is 104,378 of the original comparator market, which means we're at about 96.1% of the market average at the top of the MA scale.
Okay, before we move on to Ms. Kies-Gamaro, I just want to make sure, in case even those who will be watching this work session later have a little more clarity. So Ms. Strauss, you had made a reference to SCIF funding, and I'd like for someone to just, when we use an acronym, sometimes people don't know what we're actually referencing, so.
There are students with interrupted formal education, and a good chunk of those limited Englishly, limited English proficient kids at high school are SCIF kids who face, and some are economically disadvantaged. And we're teasing all of that data out to tell a complete picture of those students and the challenges that our school, who are really making amazing efforts and putting amazing supports. Now, we recognize from the state's point of view, there are some school districts not putting in the necessary supports, and I get that. And we want to be sure that all school districts are being held accountable to support those kids across the finish line. We're putting the resources in for them to get a successful start. We just need to make sure that these indicators are not calling the finish line earlier than they're ready to finish. So it's really working through, and I think we're gonna be able to, I'm hopeful over the next two weeks, we're gonna be able to find a solution that can move us forward, if not immediately, over the next year or two, that more appropriately categorizes the challenge these schools have.
I appreciate that, because I know this school division has made this important promise that we want to approach each student by name and by need.
Right.
And that's a piece of this, that if students are arriving with interrupted formal education, and many of them are, might be even older by the time they can finish these diploma requirements. We have the newcomer school, which is something that Fairfax County learned and piloted and said, here, how do we find the different pathways for students to achieve their high school diploma? And so this, to me, is a, is an extension of that. And so, Ms. Strauss, I'm glad you brought it up, because certainly one of the big things is Fairfax County Schools being so committed to the dropout rate and reducing that. And yet, when we have students who are arriving with such significant need, we can't apply the same solution every time. The second thing, I just want to make sure there's clarity on, because we're using it a lot. The second thing, I just want to make sure there's clarity on because we're using it a lot. We were talking about the stipends and Bill Curran working on that. Dr. Brabran, I want to make sure again for clarity with the board members. The stipends, as I was hearing you, is about, we give coaching stipends and we give other advisor and sponsorship stipends for when they're helping students with these sports and extracurricular activities like chorus band, archery band. So, that's what we meant by those stipends.
Yes, thank you.
We then have Ms. Evans, who's talking about an individual student stipend that we might be providing. And that has to do more with schools where there isn't as much funding coming in from the extracurricular activities. And that's taking some time, which we appreciate you're looking into.
That would be a supplemental funding or a per pupil funding support for schools to help level the playing field for their extracurricular and co-curricular resources. Some schools have an imbalance in resources, right? Others can go out to their community and get additional supports for extracurricular and co-curricular activities. And that's part of the discussion. Board members wanted to see what those gate receipts were like. And frankly, some were as high as 95,000, some were as low as 20,000. I mean, that's like a $70,000 spread for a school. And it does come back to impacting the access and opportunity gaps that we've been talking about. This board has been talking about and we're working and partnering with you on. So, I, we will have something new that's never been done before to share with you. I just don't have it board ready yet, but we're busy crunching numbers and trying to build. And again, it'll look something, like I said, there's Title I funding that's been done on a per pupil, per pupil expenditure basis. We'll figure out the right methodology. We're building something that's never been done. So, it's not like we're looking at another school districts. We're trying to create something that hasn't been created before around this area.
Thank you. And finally, I just wanted to make sure that there was clarity to, suggestion Ms. Strauss was bringing up about the warehouse. So, Ms. Strauss, as I was hearing you, what you're talking about is some of our more affluent schools with the community resources.
Before we clarify next steps, can we all have a turn?
Yeah, I just, it wasn't about next steps, Ms. Schultz. I just think that, I'm conscious if people are watching this and we make references to what we think we understand, but people don't. And I saw some people's reaction when Ms. Schultz, when Ms. Strauss was bringing up the suggestion. I wanted to just make sure, because part of Ms. Schultz, our dialogue with each other is to make sure we understood what each other was suggesting. So, no one else can weigh in if they weren't sure what Ms. Schultz, she was telling us. That was my point. But that's, Ms. Strauss, I'm just saying, if you could just clarify that.
Warehouse space to store, there, it's not only athletic equipment. We have theater equipment, you've got instruments, you've got a whole bunch of stuff. And there's never a closet big enough. And the schools and the teachers and the kids would like to share and can share if they had a place to store it. And it would save them money. It'll cost us money in leasing space, but it will save the school money in supplies, so.
I think that's very innovative. And so, Ms. Schultz, my goal was just that as you all take your turns, I would actually, as the budget chair, like to hear what people think about some of these suggestions. It will help with next steps.
Okay. Well, thank you for this report. And I can start with, let me start with my questions and then I'll come back to the categories. You, Ms. Burden, when you went over the chart with the graph, you listed out some actual salaries, but they're not in here. So, just for reference, when we come back, it would be nice if we had that information with it so that, you know, we can have the comparison in our minds. I wasn't able to write down everything you said, so it'd be nice if it was included. Let's see, what was the other thing?
Ms. Kies-Gamar, on the salaries, do you want entry and high and then the midpoint? Do you want all salaries across the entire 30?
No, not across, not all of them.
Just beginning, end and midpoint?
Right, so we can have an idea of what we're talking about. And also, I think you mentioned ERFC had a certain value for us.
Yep.
It would be nice if that, for the public who is interested in this kind of thing, for them, for that to be written out as well so that they know how we're comparing. I know sometimes I have conversations with the public and they're like, "No, that's not true." And it's because we're calculating, the way we're calculating it is not necessarily spelled out.
Thank you.
So, I think just for clarity, that might be helpful. With respect to compensation, I think it's, the pages are not numbered. Signature Investments fiscal year 17 to 20, so the 383, I always quote what Dr. Brabran said, which is about 400,000 over, but that's over four years, correct? Okay. All right, let me go back to, before I run out of my time, go back to the priorities. So, for me, compensation of our staff members continues to be a priority. That's going to be ongoing. And that's not going to change. In addition, class sizes is a priority for me. And I'd like to know with the investment, how much we've been able to move the needle. So, what that means in terms of our average class sizes. Let's see, what was the other thing? We talked about dropout prevention, but I'd like to make sure, Dr. Brabran, that that's also including not just dropout from high school, but also preparation as our kids are going on to college. There's been some concerns about those numbers and how successful they are. I know with special education, we try to do some transition planning. I'm wondering if that needs to happen across the board because it does appear that sometimes our kids are not prepared for that next step.
So, not just dropout prevention, but secondary, post-secondary planning and transition?
Right. And it may not be that every child is going to college, but having those discussions ahead of time so that they understand what those options, those other options are.
Okay, thank you.
I thought I cut that off, I'm sorry. And also what that means with respect to, oh, my time is up. I can do, I can do a, go back.
Ms. Burden, are there any responses to Ms. Kies-Gamar's questions?
Yes, we can get you the information. I just thought, really the whole purpose of this chart was the visual of seeing how much progress we've made over the last four years. But, so I just gave the range, but we can certainly provide that to the entire school board as far as what those numbers are. The ERFC number is actually on this page. It's about the sixth line down, based on the average salary. The rate is 6.26% and that works out to be 47.36. That was it.
May I respond to that? So, just so, when the public is looking at that number, they know that it's because of that 47.36 as to how we're ranking in that. I'm not sure that was, at least when I glanced at it, that that was clear. Okay.
Okay. Mr. McAvine stepped away from the table, so Ms. Schultz, you are up.
Okay. So, I have a couple of questions. In the past, if you can, this is a fine screen. In the past, I have identified concerns that we don't actually have a jurisdiction to jurisdiction equivalency because places like Loudoun County have a different contract year and a different contract day. And so, there isn't a direct equivalency for how much we pay because their teachers work, I think actually, if I recall, a longer year, but fewer hours in a day. I think they have a seven-hour contract day. I don't remember off the top of my head. So, has this been normed to account for differences in contract lengths for the year and for the day? That's question number one. Number two is, if you could flip to the previous table? Well, okay, I'll ask this question first. The rate of, because we have the 93%, you said, on the PhD. What is the comparison to the number of PhD? Like, we have so many more employees, but the number and the rate of comparison to other jurisdictions for the BA through PhD? I don't know if you know that. So, like, of our teachers, you know, of the 14,000 or whatever, you know, are 1,000 PhDs or 5,000 PhDs or 500 PhDs? And what is that like in comparison to a rate and a ratio to the other jurisdictions? And I do mean for each of those. I just use PhD as an example. So, what I'm trying to find out is, are we, you know, MA heavy? Are we really on par for, you know, BA 15 through PhD? I don't know. I can't tell from this. And then, can you go to the previous slide to this? No, the previous slide. Yes. And so, on, I feel like this is a perennial ask. The same table that has that, those lines with not only salary, but salary plus benefits. What does that line look like? Because we always see that in salary, but we never see what that line looks like salary plus benefits. And so, I think that's the reality of where our teachers are. I think it emphasizes the ERFC model. And then, my final question, at least for right now, is in the table of suggestions, there's, it seems to be boiled down to, I don't know, eight or so categories. But what were, I don't feel like that that was very inclusive because I know there were other suggestions. So, the fact that they were rolled up into like a handful doesn't cover all of them. Why doesn't it cover all of them? And why can't we discuss all of them and then decide now? Because we aren't aware of what was said in the two-by-twos because this list has been sanitized of anything that didn't make this list.
Okay, let me answer the easy ones first because I have great difficulty with trying to write down six questions while you're actually speaking them.
I couldn't agree with you more. I think the three minutes is terrible.
To get an answer in my head while you're saying you've moved on to the fourth one and at that point, it's all over.
We do ourselves a disservice by this ridiculous rule.
So, the first one is you are absolutely right. Just for example, Alexandria City has 196 days at 7.25 hours a day. Arlington, 194, 7.5. Weir, 194, 7.5. Loudoun, 194, at 7. Montgomery County, 200 days at 8 hours. Prince William County, 181 days at 7 hours. And we do not norm for that. In order to do that, we would have to literally take the salaries for each schedule down to the hourly rate. We've, I barely had time to get this done in time for 4:00 PM tonight. So, that is not something that we're doing. But you're absolutely right. There would be slight differences. But I think an annual salary is an annual salary is an annual salary. That it's really, it would not make, it will not make a huge difference, or at least not enough for somebody to.
I posit it also has to do with workload. If you have 200 days versus 184 days, I mean, but that's okay. I'm not going to go back and forth because we don't have that rule.
Yeah, well, Montgomery County, though, reports that they have 200-day contracts and they're Maryland. So, you know, all bets are always off when it's a different state. But they have 12 of those days are unscheduled of those 200. So, now they're working less than Fairfax. So, yeah, it's hard.
Okay, I would ask that that be in the next step, that we just get that as backup? And do you have anything on the other, could you remember?
The other thing you asked about.
Oh, sorry, real quick, because I'm listening to this and I always believe we should improve things. I don't have a problem, Ms. Schultz, that, Ms. Burden, if you want her to, as you're ready to the next question, she can repeat which one that was. There's no reason for you to be recalling six questions and racing to write it down. It's hearing it and then board members, you can reiterate your question one at a time.
Okay, and we have 2% PhDs, which is about 305 positions. I do not know how that compares to others. We would need to do a survey to find that out.
So, the reason I ask this, you know, we talk about the top of this. The reason this is important is understanding the scope and the impact of issues is something that impacts 10,000 teachers versus 205 teachers. The scope of the problem is dramatically different. If you're trying to move 93% to 100 and it's 200 people.
No, honestly, we are proud, the issue, the issue this board confronted with the prior superintendent and took dramatic action was to eliminate the SAG in the middle with mid-career employees, teachers leaving here to go elsewhere. We've really eliminated the SAG. It's a different question whether at the very top end, we feel we've got to meet the market or go above, as we said. And I want to take your other point, which you asked her about, which was the ERFC. We can get the graphs. We had those graphs last year. We put them in. And we did talk at this and we put in the slide to show you the distribution of benefits, 4,000 or 5,000. Let me just finish to say, so we did that before. I think it's 4% or 5%. So, we're really, if you added in the benefits, right? If you add in that ERFC, you're right at that bubble of 95 to 105. We're right at about 105 if you added salary plus the benefits in. So, we're, we are, if you put it all, in that very competitive range. The thing at the very end, like Marty said, we do see ERFC as a way, once you're here that long, you're going to want to stay for that ERFC benefit that no other school district can provide. And we can continue to look at the very end.
The point I'm making, though, when, and I will, I will express frustration. Again, we're at percentages without an N. There's no understanding of the number. How many positions, how many people are BA? How many people are BA 15? What is the scope of people that we're talking about? It's not difficult upfront to provide us the breakdown so that we're understanding. You know, data is one thing, data in context is something else. Meaningful data in context gets us to understanding, understanding decisions.
Right, we can do that. And I mean, the teaching force is, what's the number, Marty? Is it 14,000?
15,405.
Yeah, so we can take it. Of which 2% of PhD is 200 teachers, 60%.
305.
Right. We can take those and put the numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I've got the numbers. I couldn't have generated the percentages with.
We'll remember, percentages and numbers is a reoccurring thing and sometimes we forget it.
What was it?
My other was, what are the other things that were talked about in the two-by-twos that aren't in this scrubbed-up version of the slide of where the issues are? I wouldn't know because we don't have all the issues. There's just some of the issues. And I don't know which issues of peoples were not included. Ms. Strauss brought up one that wasn't included. What I'm saying is, what should have been brought to us is the complete list of things that were identified in the two-by-twos, not a scrubbed-up sanitized version that looked like they were majorities. I think I want to know, because there may be individual issues that occurred in one or two two-by-twos that I, that are of interest to me. And I want to know what all of the concerns of my colleagues are before we produce, not what somebody said the majority was or appears to be.
I understand what you're asking from Ms. Schultz. And one of the things I had put in my email earlier today was, beyond that list of eight items, individual board members, if you didn't see something that you brought forward, this is the perfect time for people to bring it up. And then, people can end up saying, "I didn't hear that," obviously, because I wasn't in that particular two-by-two. But we'd like to see that added to the list.
I disagree that it's our responsibility to re-identify what we already identified in two-by-twos. That's why we have the staff. We went through that effort. I think that every issue that was brought forward as a potential concern should be on this list for us to consider so that we can hear all of the concerns of the, of our colleagues, not just what was thought to be the majority voice. I want to hear the minority concerns too, whether it's fine arts, warehousing.
Technically, you're correct, but since every item that was listed there had two or more board members, when there's 12 of us and only two cited them as a top-three issue, technically, almost everything ended up falling into a minority topic of interest, but just at least two people mentioned it. So, I will work with Mr. Moon and Ms. Burden on how we get that information through the chair and vice chair of the board. Back to all of you. But in the meantime, I still encourage everyone for today's work session because we'll be having additional ones next month, to please bring them up today if you, if you can. So, I have Mr. McAvine followed by Ms. Heinz.
Great, thank you. So I'll take a different tact than others, can we go back to the list please? So, in, in looking at these, I will tell you which of them to begin with are my lowest priorities and I think that would be the school board supports and communication. In terms of school board staffing, I think, and I've evolved over the, evolved on this over time, I think we have an appropriate level of staffing, it is just the training of that staff that we need to work on. Frankly, I think our staff is underutilized because they aren't trained up in the things that we need them to be trained on. I think parliamentary procedure for one, I think communications, social media, all those kind of things, that's just not who we're hiring for and so I think that needs to be a conversation of the, the next board on that. I do continue to advocate for increased school board salaries. Unfortunately, this board missed the boat this year on that, which was our once in a four-year opportunity to, to raise those. I think they should be on par with the supervisors. Frankly, the work that we do is more important than the supervisors. And my second lowest priority, I mentioned the communications, I think, similar to school board staff, I think we need to do more with what we have and I just don't think folks are, are trained in the things that we need. Very briefly and I'll, I'll probably need to go back, I will tell you the, the things that I see as most critical on here. First and foremost, what we continue and what I continue to hear from students and families is equity of programming throughout the district. And when I hear that from, from Kimberly at the board table as well as others, I think that the greatest manifestation of that is the inequities in our foreign language program and that's something that we worked on this year. But again, this board poured what we thought were millions and millions of dollars into that, then ended up going nowhere with, with the expansion of FLESS. So I think we, we owe it to our community to continue to invest in that. Secondly, I'm a, as I go around the district, I am hearing concerns about equity in terms of the IB program, in terms of offerings of the primary years program and how we are expecting individual schools to pay for that program when it really should be centrally done. I know Dogwood is a perfect example of that. And so, you know, I think IB program is something that is the true embodiment of the portrait of the graduate and if we want students to be able to reach those outcomes, we have to invest in those programs. I'll raise one more point here that grew with Elizabeth, that we, we need a listing of everything. One of my top priorities was middle school start times, I don't see that up here. And, you know, I think, I talked with Scott about this, you know, when we look at legacy, what, and I know my time is up, so I'll end on this point, what distinguished Karen Garza was her ability to move on high school start time in such a short amount of time. I think if Scott wants to make an impact, he will move on middle school start times and I think the other legacy project is FCPS ON. And so I do think it, it would be wise for this board because we have had experience in both of those two realms and the expansion of both, well, middle school start times and FCPS ON, for us to make, make a commitment to doing that proceeding with both of those initiatives for the community. Thank you.
So before I move to Ms. Heinz, I do want to just note, Mr. McElveen, that as Ms. Burden had said, Ms. Evans and I have that as a budget follow-on directive, so while it's not listed up there, we absolutely expect the superintendent to bring back to the board the information on what are the costs and operational demands of a middle school start time. So you can count on us continuing to make sure that staff delivers on that important directive that we all voted and supported on, so thank you for bringing it up. It, it will not fall off. Ms. Heinz?
Yeah, thank you. So a few things, on, as you're going through stipends, I just want, if no one has yet, I want to put in a plug for the Science Olympiad. Those teachers spend a lot of time and I know Ryan and I keep hearing from the same wonderful teacher who spends many, many hours, I mean, more than a lot of sports coaches do. And it's, it's an important opportunity, especially for, as an equity piece, you know, for buildings that don't have a teacher or parent willing to do that. Thank you, Mr. McElveen, for your comments about equity. I think if we're serious about equity and programming across the county, that means that we're going to have schools that sometimes have very small classes in AP calcu, you know, calculus, whatever those high math classes are. If we're going to make them available, that means that in some high schools, the class will have eight kids in it and we have to be okay with that and that's going to cost more money, right? And I think we have to build that in. And also, oh, the IB programs, you know, when we have Dogwood, right, raising $10,000 a year just to write a check to the IB people, it's just a check, you know, we really ought to support that, I think. So another thing I wanted to just talk about a bit is the, the JET, the Joint Environmental Task Force, you know, so far it hasn't cost us anything, but we do probably need some staff support. So you and I talked about this a little bit as maybe if we do provide more support in the school board office or somewhere in the system for those kind of task forces and, you know, issue oriented advisory boards, which, you know, we'd like to be able to stand up sometimes, but we need support for it. I mean, we definitely can't have school board members taking notes and things because things fall through the cracks, I'm here to tell you, when I'm in charge. And then also related to the JET, the EV buses. So I've sent to, and, and thank you, Mr. Smith, for being willing to help me out with that. I think I'm going to bring to the board sometime soon, a forum requesting that the school system put out a request for information on how we could convert our bus fleet to electric. And I know the board hasn't even had a chance to talk about this, but as long as we're talking about budget, I, I don't know, as a result of that request for information, we may find that there are costs, upfront costs, that the school system, you know, might want to bear in order to get that process moving faster. We're very hopeful that all of that, converting to EV is something that will not cost us anything upfront and in fact will save us money from day one, that's the hope. But if there's anything that comes back in the request for information that shows if we make a little investment upfront, it will pay off later and we have a chance to make a placeholder or somehow if you can keep an eye on that as you put together your budget, does that make sense?
Right, I, I probably don't know the specifics, Mr. Smith, of what you and Ms. Heinz discussed. I mean, we certainly put in the applica, have we put in the application for Dominion already?
Yes.
Right, and we're all in on all 50 of the 50, so, you know, Dominion's going to have to pick Fairfax first and figure out everybody else later. Since they came here to do the announcement in Fairfax, I'm sure it sounds good to just let us have the first 50. But as far as the, the EV piece, I don't know if that's different than what Dominion's trying to build out or, or it's different, so I.
Yeah, so I, I think it is a little bit. I think it's great that we're going for that pilot, but we have 1,600 buses.
Okay.
And even if we get all 50, we have to have a plan.
Right.
And goals and a strategy for, you know, converting. And so, and that, that, that's the, and we'll talk about this more at the forum, I don't want to use up the budget, but yeah.
That's right, so forum, we'll be ready and we'll be there to listen.
Think about the budget aspects of it if possible, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wilson, did you want to take a turn?
Thank you for your thoughtfulness, Ms. McLaughlin, I do appreciate that. So I think I echo comments made by some of my colleagues, you know, Mrs. Schultz's comments regarding the data and having data in context and that we can, is relevant for our discussions is a constant drumbeat, I think, that we hear whenever we have this sort of delivery of, of information and so I would, I would echo that. I also, the, the listing of, of the, of the many issues that I'm sure were brought forward in the two by twos, even if they didn't have more than two board members making the same request, I think that'd be helpful for everybody and help, and helpful for just the exchange of ideas in a work session is that, that we really do need to know what the thoughts were since we, we had to have, you know, two by two meetings. We had, you know, there's no way we can find out the information unless it's brought to us because of the way, the requirements for how, how we meet. So I would, I would like to see that as well. And I would also echo the middle school start times issue. That is, that is an important issue, it comes up, I think, whenever I go to a middle school, the families are concerned and remain concerned about middle school start times. So I do think the board needs to focus on, on that topic. I, I think that the approach, rather than, you know, picking, picking sort of winners on this list that's here, I think actually, I would agree that the communication and, and is probably the, that's the one I'm, I'm kind of surprised is on there, I'm not even really sure, I mean, maybe someone could talk about this, but communication as a budget priority, it says misinformation and FCPS image. For me, it would be promoting transparency, really, that's in terms of communicating to the public, it's really about transparency on issues, how we communicate, less about misinformation, but, so I, I'm not sure what I fully think about that. I do, I do want to say that it's, it's quite encouraging to me to, to look at the progress in teacher salary slide and see that really from three to 11 years, we're really doing well in terms of treating our teachers with, you know, the respect they deserve in terms of how their salaries compare to the market average. And even, even beyond that, I think in, in year 14 or 15, it looks like we're also still ahead of that. And, and actually, when I look at the Virginia comparison slide for total compensation, you know, both in the MA, the MA plus 30 and the PhD columns, you know, the total compensation puts us in a great position that we can, you know, can demonstrate through compensation to our employees that we really have made a huge effort to, to provide that to our, our teachers. And, and, and as I've been in the, in the schools and in the communities, the teachers have reflected back to me that they do appreciate that and, and so that's, that's a great, great thing to see. On the employee benefit slide, I'd like to see the share of benefits over time because, you know, something like social security sits at 7.65, but other things are changing over time and I think that would be helpful for us to see where we've got growth in portions of our, our benefit slice, which, which parts of the benefits are increasing over time so that we can perhaps have some projections about what future costs in those areas might be. So that's, those are my comments, I guess I don't have any real questions, but I think that we've already asked several good ones, thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. Okay, before I go to go backs and also to allow Vice Chair, Mr. Moon, to weigh in, Ms. Polczek, did you want to add anything at this point or did you want to listen some more?
I think I'll.
Okay, all right, so I will go to Mr. Moon and then for go backs, just so you know where we are, I've got Ms. Schultz, Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Evans. Did you have a go back too? All right, so then.
I have seven minutes.
Okay. I will squeeze you in by the queue that you're supposed to be.
Thank you, I'm going to be fair to myself, so settle for three minutes and then start the clock. Okay. It is exciting that we are having this discussion relatively early this year. I think this is a better process, whether you have an election this year, so we have retiring board members who may not otherwise be able to provide input. Input, I think if we could make this as now regular process for the budget deliberation. A downside of this is that, you know, we don't have a fiscal, fiscal forecast at this point, not even a rough one. Or do we have any rough fiscal forecast? I don't know, how early can you have that forecast so that our, a, a discussion could have really meet into it without having the numbers? Because, you know, looking at these categories, who's not going to support things on there? Maybe there may be one or two, but, you know, a little bit difficult for me to, you know, certain number out of that category is, even, even those who might have been left off the list. I mean, there was a judgment call on the part of those who are preparing for today's meeting because it was a longer list and, you know, obviously with the board members wanting to see the entire longer list, I mean, there's nothing for anybody to hide anything, there's no attempt to hide anything, it was just having whether, how we're going to frame the discussion today. So, so I am for today, there isn't anything on the list.
Can we get to that slide, please?
On the list, I am willing to rule out, and so I am, I am, I'll be supporting this, of course. You know, there is a follow-up motion, it's my follow-up motion, at the time we adopted the budget last year, dealing with the compensation, there is one of my top priority, that I still believe that, that we should become, we should become a market leader, not just a market average. We may be slightly, mostly, you're looking at the different, different education level, we may be slightly above the market, I think we should be near at the top. That's, and I hope that we're FCPS, strive for. Someone, I think, you know, Mr. McElveen, you know, commenting upon school board support, I mean, I agree with Mr. McElveen that, that maybe those in our school board office, I think board members or board as a collective body need to have a better communication of, to our school board office personnel as to what the expectation from board members are. Individual board members may have different expectations than I certainly work in different ways than Mrs. McLaughlin, my needs may be different from Mrs. McLaughlin. But in addition to, what I believe is, in addition to what I have in the school board office, I wish over the last 20 or period of time, that my service on the board, someone who could go to a meeting with me in the evenings and weekends, you know, and take notes, someone who could represent me when I am unable to go personally, that type of support does not exist. That's where school board members, next board, could certainly better by having someone, just like what you see county supervisors, you know, they have multiple staff who can go out and represent supervisor's office. On behalf of supervisors, when supervisors themselves cannot go, they can go. That kind of high lever with a political savviness, I'm not saying that our school board staff do not have that savviness, but they play a different role as currently structured. That is what the board members, after 24, having had 24 years of elected board, now needs to have, should have had that much before, but never too late to tackle that and provide that kind of support to board members.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. So for my go backs, going in order of when people signaled them, I have Ms. Kies-Gamaro, then Ms. Schultz, then Ms. Corbett Sanders and then Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I, I will echo Mr. McElveen's comments about equity, but I would like to clarify it to mean, I think we need to ask how to achieve that. I mean, it may be the IB programs and things of, of that nature, but we may need to have a discussion about, you know, how, we've heard comments in recently in, in the community about, you know, some schools in Drainsville versus other schools in Drainsville and why do we have those perceptions and how do we deal with that and is that part of an equity issue? And if so, how do we deal with it? Because I quite frankly, don't think it's fair to the folks who are in some of those schools that are on the negative end of those comments. So I, I think we need to figure out what that means. I would also say, let's see, with respect to, let's see, oh, the other thing I wanted to bring up was we talked about the stipends for coaches. With respect to that, I have continued to have a concern with respect to standardization of what we can, I know these are volunteers, but parents expect certain things if they are representing FCPS. And Title IX, how they operate, what, what training they receive, what expectations are communicated, I'm not sure how we wrap that into a stipend, but I don't think that parents' comments or parents' concerns are limited by how much we give them. So that is a concern for me. I talked a little bit about the transition and, and I talked about class sizes, let me just check my list, okay. And also do support the middle school start times. With respect to, I did want to talk a little bit about communications and Mr. Wilson re-characterized it as promoting trans- And Mr. Wilson re-characterized it as promoting transparency. And I would say, he's just describing the opposites inside of the other coin, right? If you have misinformation, greater transparency and information to the community will help to squelch some of the misinformation. I think it is costly to us not to have quality, and I'm not saying, perhaps that's not the best way to say it, improved communication so that the community understands what we're doing, understands our process and how it's happening. And so I would, I would continue to argue for that. The other thing that I would argue for is we absolutely, whether it's that our staff needs different training or we need to communicate it, we need to figure out how much it costs to get them where board members need them to be. The expectations of the community of a school board member is not any less than our board of supervisors counterparts. Yet, we do not have the staffing for that to happen. So I would phrase it that way, and I thank Mr. Moon for his comments.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Kies-Gamaro. Ms. Schultz?
Well, we started talking about coach stipends, but actually, that was my number one. For example, and I don't actually have all my notes that, that we had during our conversation, but that, for example, that was the concern that I saw, that that was the first thing that I brought, is the sheer number of hours that some coaches work. And Ms. Kies-Gamaro, you're mentioning the equity between coaches, but the time isn't equitable between coaches. There are some coaches that spend exponentially more time. And the thought that with a lot of what we've experienced, that we're expecting excellence, we're expecting PD to be carried out through, you know, coaching at a level that's pretty incredible. And oh, by the way, for you to do it for a pittance is a tremendous problem, in my opinion. And whether we need to, well, I think discussion of stipends by role and by, by level of commitment does, you know, could potentially be part of the discussion, because I don't believe that a coach is a coach is a coach. Whether we funnel that down to things like, things that are traditionally parent volunteer, like science Olympiad, or, you know, the various math options, that's, I don't know that I put those on the same footing, because it isn't the same level of, of time commitment and for long periods of time for the seasons, especially, you know, preseason and everything else. So I wanted to get that out. With regard to the issue of what the board of supervisors have, you, people do not know that the board of supervisors have, and I don't know what their current budget is, but basically a half a million dollars annually. So, you know, you're at $5 million plus their own salaries, plus, oh, by the way, the board of supervisors earns retirement. And the reason we're in this position sadly, I think, is frankly, it's been historically built into this board, and I think it's a problem. In fact, some of us have been talking about this for a long time. It is very difficult to support the identical constituency to the board of supervisors when they have five or six or seven, depending upon how they pay, seven different people plus a district office to meet all of the legislative, political, you know, constituent outreach services, and frankly, some of the analytics. And I think there are ways in which we are sorely underserved in doing this. Now, that everybody is to the table now, or maybe most, is a change of tune. And I'm glad to see that some people have evolved. I think some people have evolved in the wrong direction on this, because if we, and this isn't about spending money on ourselves, it is our ability to effectively govern a $3 billion budget. And a pittance of an investment in our own staff to be able to meet the needs of a, of a community, the values education and values having their voice heard. And if I go back to the family engagement, Dr. Bray Brown, that I keep bringing up about the bullets that we haven't been including, is the disconnectedness people feel. That's, that's the spot that we need to shore up, not only on the staff side for the superintendent, but on the staff side for us. So I'm sure there are some other things, but that's.
Well, we, Ms. Schultz, absolutely. And the good news is, we still have another 40 minutes allocated to this. So if people have other things that they want to bring up, I know I haven't spoken yet, but I wanted to get go backs in. But if people want additional go backs, we have time for this. I'll probably speak after these go backs, because I have some concerns about where our dialogue's gone. And as a budget chair, I think we need a little more depth and focus. So Ms. Corbett Sanders, you're up next, but Ms. Palchuk, you're indicating, would you, you want to go? Okay. So Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then I have Ms. Palchuk, and then Ms. Evans for your go back as well.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I was glad that the equity of programming came up, because when we talk about equity of programming, it's a lot of what I've talked about with the FCPS promise. We actually are losing courses, what are considered core courses at some of our schools because of changing enrollment. And so we need to have that baseline that goes beyond the Core Four at the middle and high school level to ensure that we have the equity of programming. For example, a full-time band director, somebody who's offering journalism, which is critical for our own students' analytical and critical thinking skills. We also should be looking at, you know, some of the after-school programming. And so when we talk about the equity of programming, it also leads into the equity of the stipends. And I agree that some coaches work harder than others in that there's different demands on coaches. However, there's also significant demands on our performing arts programs. I mean, I know that our performing arts programs get less of a stipend than the coaches for athletics, but in many cases are as valued, if not more so, in, in the school culture for what they're doing. So I do welcome a full review of those stipends. I think that's a good idea. Next, on staffing standards, one thing I would like to see up there is, and something I've brought up in the past, is, and it goes along with the class sizes, staffing standards for science and math courses, especially at the middle and high school where we have labs. It's really important that we're actually able to have those labs, but the only way we can have those labs is if we keep those courses low or find another way of augmenting the staffing when they're doing lab work. I know that at TJ, they have people that are just lab assistants, and that allows to have a more personalized experience for all of the kids at TJ. We should have a similar experience for our kids throughout the county. That my daughter took a lab course and they didn't do a single lab because there were too many kids enrolled. The third piece is the, I talked about, is something that I apologize that I haven't raised this before, but it is related to what I mentioned earlier about having a placeholder in here for how we want to address the restraint and seclusion. And that is having a person at each of our elementary schools who would be the case manager for IEPs, because what we're finding is that our elementary school teachers and IAs are feeling overwhelmed with the sheer workload associated with IEPs. And so I would appreciate some sort of recommendation to provide additional supports at the elementary school level for, for our students with disabilities. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so I have Ms. Palchuk, followed by Ms. Evans, and then Mr. Wilson. You signaled a go back as well.
Thank you, and apologize for my delay. I was at a, we just announced our brand-new principal over at Freedom Hill, so the community's very happy to have their principal in place. So I just, and I'm listening, and I apologize if I missed some of this, but I agree with a lot of what my colleagues are saying. Definitely staffing, I think, needs to continue to be a priority. Very happy to see that we want to look at teachers. I agree with you, Mr. Moon, that we shouldn't just be average, we should be leading and ensuring that our teachers can continue to live here in Fairfax County. Also, I know we had said IAs. As soon as we got our teachers there, we wanted to start to focus on our IAs, tied in with the IEP support, that I know it's so difficult, especially as we have, you know, such a need for teachers who can work with students with special needs. Oftentimes, my understanding is it could take just one course for a teacher to be qualified to teach special ed classes. And so we really need to focus on making sure we have the best trained and supported teachers in those classrooms. Dropout prevention, I don't know if anyone mentioned it before I arrived, but it is. I know I just met with Mr. Greenfelder, and we definitely have to look at ways. I know we have a good program countywide, but to get those supports in our schools. Some of them are following kids to their work sites. So I know long-term, we're looking at programs that will best support our students. And in the short term, I think we need to figure out how to best support our kids who have a variety of needs in order to stay in school. For the school board office support, 100% agree with my colleagues. I know when I first came on the school board, I met with every single member on our board of supervisors, and they were also very supportive of the idea of figuring out how we can best do this. I know the general assembly has one option where they have their full-time person. I think some of them now have two people on their personal staff. And during session, they share administrative assistant staff. So there are a few different models in order to ensure that we can have that independent review, that we can, you know, work in our districts that want us, and we want to be out there in the district, and to also make sure that our clerk's office and our school board office have the support they need. So hopefully, we can look at options. And as I mentioned during, I think, my two-by-two, you know, finding schools in our districts, I'm lucky that our offices are in my district, but many of my colleagues don't have school board offices. So looking at schools that maybe might have some extra space where our school board members could, could have a place for an office or meeting. I'm almost out of time. And I do think communication overall, I'm not sure what we want to call it, but our ability to communicate, to listen to the concerns in the community, to work with, you know, realtors, developers, to help, you know, explain beyond this one formula on one website, the great work. Even someone told me, being able to show some of the test scores that we're seeing, you know, as school board members are definitely not reflected in these online websites. So to be able to share, you know, so many of our schools, all accredited, right, that are doing excellent work. So being able to better communicate that and to hear the concerns from the community. So happy to go back. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Palchuk. Okay, so I have Ms. Evans, followed by Mr. Wilson.
So thank you, Ms. Palchuk, for bringing that up. That was going to be one of, one of my follow-ups as well to, and that is something that we've tasked the superintendent with in terms of actively responding to the, basically, maligning of some of our schools, you know, on, on the websites where they're selling homes, and it reduces a school to one number. And that, that is very destructive. And so I guess my question is, when are we going to see the proposal on that? I believe that was the next step from a work session, so.
Yeah, we've, we've been meeting. We've had, we've had some folks out in our communications staff, which has slowed us down from meeting. I think there was a summer deadline. We'll have something for you this fall that will be part of something that we can start to do, I hope, in the new year. And if we need additional budget resources, we'll bring it. But I, I think we actually have some resources that we have held back from that we just need to put out front and tell our story better than we've told it. And if we don't do that, others are going to tell it who have a vested interest in things that don't necessarily align with our goals and mission. So we're working on that. I'd say we'll have something in the next 30 days.
That's wonderful, because, you know, that I think is, is a key and certainly one of my top priorities in my, my final months on the board. As, as is the equity, and I did raise the one, and I'll reiterate that certainly a top priority of mine is to move forward with the, the extracurricular activities and helping to level the playing field. I appreciate Mr. McElveen bringing up some of the, the other issues as well, including IB. And it's not just Dogwood. Certainly, Belvedere Elementary School, I know they have to reach into their own staffing for, not remembering if it's a full staffer or a half, an IB coordinator. And really, that shouldn't be. That should be central office. If we're going to put IB in, it shouldn't come out of their other allocation. So thank you for raising that. And of course, thank you for raising middle school start times. You know, that's, we do have a follow-on on that, and I'm glad to hear all the support on, on the board for moving forward. While there may be some no-cost solutions, my guess is that when we get into it, we probably will need to set some money aside to, to do that. I don't think our middle, I, you know, I, that is something that we, we do have to, to address, you know, for the health of our kids. So I would agree with that. On the IAs, I'll agree with Ms. Corbett Sanders about wanting to move, continue to move forward. And I believe we also continue to have a, just a very small number of more-than-half-time people who don't get benefits. I believe we're still waiting for the answer on who they are. I'll, I'll look forward to, to hearing that. If we, Ms. Burden, you can tell me if we do have an answer on that yet or not. That, that was something that we had.
I know that we have 585 temporary hourly workers that work somewhere between 20 and 29.9 hours per, per week. It's the fact that they're all classified as temporary hourly as far as how they're paid, so that, you know, knowing what capacity they're working in is, is the issue. But HR is aware of the question. I just don't know what the status is right now.
I think when we have only 500 people who are working for us more than half-time and still don't get benefits, we, we should certainly find out who they are and what they're doing, and hopefully move forward with that. So just two other quick points. I am hearing great things about the behavior intervention specialists everywhere I go. Principals are very appreciative of that. That might be something that we would want to, to see, you know, would, would they benefit from a few more? I know they're very appreciative. And to the, the idea of a special ed case manager, I was talking to a principal at a Title I school just today with a very similar thought, that this is so, so intensive a need at virtually, you know, all of our, well, particularly our, I guess, our elementary schools where they're just starting with the IEPs. But I think in terms, if we're looking at adding staff, that might be a way to go, or possibly a position to do both special education and attendance, because attendance is something, you could call it something else. I don't, you know, I don't much care what the titles are, but we, you know, our, our schools in particular, our high-need schools could, could use that type of a position.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. So I have Mr. Wilson for a go back. I then will make a few remarks, and then we're going to roll into next steps before we lose any of our colleagues who have to leave at 6 o'clock.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. So just, I think that a couple of my colleagues have touched on this, but, you know, in the categories, I really think that there's a miss here, because I know I brought up some concerns in special education. And as a category, I think special education needs to be up there, because it's already been mentioned by several of our board members. And I know that, you know, we've talked in the past about disproportionate treatment in the disciplinary process, having more flexibility in staffing ratios. And I've heard that as I've gone to back-to-school nights at some of my schools. And also, a proposal that I've put forward and asked the superintendent to look into, which is sort of a rapid response team to embed where we've got a situation that is a potential going to be turned into a crisis situation. And I know they're looking at that as, as what is feasible. But I think we've got to put up there as a category, and this maybe goes to the communication of the public, that the special education community remains a high concern for this board, and that we are looking at it, and that we may, you know, we may need to make some enhancements in our budget priorities as we move forward.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Wilson. I appreciate that. Before we go into next steps, I just want to weigh in on what a few things our colleagues have said here. Having sponsored the follow-on motion on the budget. on what a few things our colleagues have said here. Having sponsored the follow-on motion on the budget for middle school start times, having been a member of the original board where we talked so much about the importance of later start times for both high school and middle school, I want to reiterate what Ms. Evans and so many of you have said. It is a priority. And Mr. McElveen, I think you actually said it best. Karen Garza's legacy is she understood the board's commitment that we want to see it done. Mr. Plattenberg was an equal problem solver to that end, and we're always grateful for what he did to help us bring that success from Loudoun County to here. I continue to hear it from our families in the community. I am deeply disappointed that this board, what passed later start times, was reassured by Dr. Garza that middle school start times would probably be just two years away. And we are long past two years since this board put it through. So, Dr. Brabran, that's my plug, especially that we want to see some real aggressive planning on what this would cost, because frankly, we know it's actually priceless, what we do when students are rested and ready to learn. For some of the other things on here, what I really appreciate is Budget Chair, that you all gave me specifics. I have problems with this slide here. It is far too broad. I don't know how this, how has this become strategic as a board for identifying our priorities? They're very big buckets. So, part of what I hope next steps will be able to capture is drilling down into each of these buckets where the areas are, because as staff are starting to look through their departments and say where they're seeing the budget and operational priorities going into the next fiscal year, you can look into any one of these buckets and say, okay, what's the line-item cost? What's going to be the budget impact to, you know, make a difference in these areas? So, I think it's a start, but I do want to see more specificity along with estimated budget costs to any of these, because some will be a very small dollar value. One of the things that Mr. Moon and I, when we talk to staff about school board supports, and I appreciate people bringing up what the General Assembly said, that, you know, whereas the example of the General Assembly delegates and senators, they have one full-time staffer who helps them. The board supervisors all have a chief of staff who does accompany them to all of their important meetings, including when we have the joint meetings with the board supervisors. And as board members, we don't have anyone there to be listening, hearing, and then working with us on how we're going to move forward on any action, even in that work. I really appreciate that our board supervisors have also been very supportive of this discussion, that school board members are elected officials, and yet we're the only elected officials, as I understand, in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia, without a single at-will employee that we can end up hiring to serve us and serve our constituencies in the best manner that we see possible. It would not be a big dollar ask. I've not heard anybody say more than one staffing position. And as it was noted by several, the board supervisors have a half-million dollars each roughly for that. But we'll be able to cover that more as we do the budget preparations. I know Mr. Moon gave me three minutes, but actually, everybody got their go-back. So, technically, I could have had six minutes. So, at this point, I will.
Your time is set up.
Yeah, my time is not up. But you need to set, you need to set the clock. But anyway, the point is that right now, we'll go ahead and roll into next steps. But, and as Budget Chair, I can certainly send you all emails on whatever it is that I'm thinking that I want to direct you on. But I appreciate everybody being so engaged in this work session. I do hope staff has found it helpful. And Ms. Schultz, for moving to next steps, you had something to add?
Right. I just had one follow-up. On the question of adding IEPs to this, I don't know how that fits into as much of a budget discussion as in, I think there's a bigger issue, which is a review, and I will give DSS credit, is that over time, and this is something that I've worked really hard on with ACSD, is to limit the scope of the people who are at the table in an IEP meeting, both to reduce the pressure on the people in the building to be at the IEP table, and to reduce the, you know, the wall of people who are sitting across from a parent, which is very intimidating. But I don't know how, like, we're, I feel like we're leapfrogging to say, well, we need to put this under the budget as a priority, because I don't know that we've actually looked at the IEP process enough to determine how we can streamline further the IEP process to reduce even further. I mean, it's one thing to meet the federal and state mandates, and I want to do that. I don't want to not be compliant. But I still feel like there's not maybe efficacy in the number of people that we're bringing to the table, and being able to release people earlier, that they may only have to come for part of the IEP discussion. They may not have to be there for the whole thing, that they can contribute effectively, and then allow the parent to really only have to engage the cognizant staff to wrangle through that. So, you know, it's a.
So, Ms. Schultz, I think when it goes as a next step, you can decide one way or the other. But what I had suggested was the coordinate, a caseworker, a case manager at the elementary school, and having a placeholder in there for support to our special ed community.
But we haven't had anything presented to us about what it looks like from school to school. Like, we're leapfrogging to a case manager at every elementary school, and I don't know what it looks like at every elementary school. And I think the bigger issue is, where are we on principal trades of principals trading out special ed, reading specialists and other things, still for, I mean, I haven't had a recent, you know, that was a budget question I've asked a couple times, to see who's trading what at the principal level. And often, that's for, like, front-office personnel, like additional administrative support, and we wind up losing special ed positions, like, you know, special ed IAs or reading specialists or et cetera. And then, I hope in any and all of this, we're going to get some kind of scope so that we can, because this is priorities, but there have to be priorities within priorities, and we're going to have to understand the scope.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. That was.
So, can I just have somebody answer a little bit before we decide on that the answer is a case manager? I don't want to, I don't want to.
Schultz, I think you're asking a really important question. And my understanding as Budget Chair is, just because we're going to have next steps, or Ms. Corbett Sanders offers maybe a case manager idea, it's not marching orders for the superintendent to now build that into the budget. This is, this is kind of, he's still trying to meet with all of his departments to say, what do we currently fund? What are there, what's the LT senior administration focus of budget priorities? And then, we're going to come back again November 12th, and we'll have further discussion. This is not suddenly putting things in stone by any means. It's very early.
I don't want this to be a top-down solution. I don't know what the problem is. So, I want, I don't want to be subscribing a solution to a fix that doesn't involve, what is it that the principals are saying they need in order to reduce this burden?
Yes.
And also with special ed advocacy groups and.
What is the next step? Yeah. Ms. Schultz, absolutely. I'm seeing a lot of head nods. Everybody's in agreement. Our, Ms. Corbett Sanders has brought forward a suggestion into this area of budget priorities. The next step will be, before we can have the deeper conversation on that potential budget item, we would want more information from the superintendent operationally to say, where, what's the exact need, before we would go start funding new positions. Ms. Kieske-Mara, you needed to.
I just had a clarification question, because as I recall, I thought Dr. Brabran had put a placeholder because of special education in the task force in the budget. If I'm not mistaken, when we set up the task force, I thought we talked about a placeholder, because we were anticipating additional support.
We, I think we did a placeholder for the end of the year, and at year-end, we spent some of that placeholder. We are looking at what additional resources are necessary. And I don't have a solution today. And I get it. Look, I mean, this is, you're all sharing your thinking. We're going to do our own thinking, and if it matches up, that's great. If it doesn't, then we need to come and explain our rationale. But I'll say this. Elementary special education staffing and supports is an issue already identified by our elementary principals, already being discussed by our departments and finance. And as we're starting this discussion, we've got to figure out how to better do it. Is it a case manager? I can't tell you that right now, this evening. Is it, you know, there's a person there right now. It's a stipend position. It pays very little. There's no additional hours. What does it look like? I'll be in a better place to tell you later, later on in the fall. I just don't know right now. But I do think it is an area that merits further review.
And this is for brainstorming only, this session. So, we are not allocating funds, and that's why we knew that there was an issue in this area, and we put it on the table.
Great, thank you. All right. So, if we can go ahead and pull up the notes related to next steps. No, this is from prior work sessions. Okay. So, Ms. Mullberg, starting from today, it starts at number 68, correct? Okay. So, I'll ask each board member to please preview yours to let us know if it reads correctly.
Can I ask Ms. Strauss, what do you contemplate by, oh, where should I go? Does anybody know what she means by flexible programs for older students? I don't know what that means.
So, she was, yeah, so she was talking about the students with interrupted formal education, the SCIF students. Many of them are coming from other countries, English as a second language. They're older. They arrive here at 16, but they've never had formal education at all, trying to make up 13 years of education.
I know who the students are. I don't know what it means, flexible programs, and what that has to do with dropout. Like, what was, what is that contemplating?
All right. So.
She didn't say. Let me give you an example of just our normal, a regular general ed student of one alternative program over the years, and I don't even know if it still exists. I have staff looking. It's called a grants program. You're 16, 17, 18. You're behind on credits, and you get an opportunity to prep for a GED. So, at least you walk out with a GED, a high school diploma equivalency. That could be an example. Some kids could be in the, trying to catch up on the courses. If a kid's about to drop out for a financial incentive, could we offer the opportunity for that kid to get some other sort of certificate, as opposed to simply dropping out and going into the workplace with no degree? So, I.
But this is a known, like, we're not, what I'm thinking about is, okay, for the number of students, I'm just trying to define staff time. Are you inventing these programs, or these are some things that you could.
No, we would find existing programs to decide whether students that we're having, one experience right now, could have other experiences and still be able to meet the obligations and requirements for the state.
The only thing that's not up there from mine is the staffing standards that we would add to it, science and math in high school? To staffing standards priorities.
I don't believe, I don't, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing captured, basically, the, any of the numbers. So, it's not just the numbers. Well, division, provide numbers. Okay. If you just understand, Ms. Burden, 76, that includes, you know, I'd like the number of the BEAs. I'd like the, I'd like the number of students or teachers in each, you know, the data behind all the roll-up. Okay.
Okay.
I want to suggest that we go through and go through the next steps of people who have to leave. So, if we have questions, I mean, I had one for Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to be a little bit of a stickler. I was told that people had needed to leave for 7 o'clock commitment, and so, they would be leaving at 6:00. So, I don't need anybody leaving any sooner than 6:00, please, so we can finish.
My challenge is there's supposed to be traffic, and I have to be there. I just got a note on it. So, that's why. Ms. Evans?
So, just on your, the case manager idea, did you intend to limit it just to IEPs, or were you thinking it would possibly be a broader role than, I guess, in the conversation I had today was a little broader than that, is why I'm asking.
No, my intent was to provide greater support for our students with disabilities at the elementary school level. And so, well, it's providing the supports for the students, but also providing support to the teachers so that they don't feel as overwhelmed and have the pressures on them. And it was my understanding that the amount of time that our teachers are out of a classroom to support the IEP process leaves the IAs in the classroom and not a teacher for much of the time. And so, we need additional support to that experience. And I don't know if it's a case manager or something else, but it is providing that extra support at the elementary school in particular for our students and, you know, for our students with disabilities, but also for the staff that support those students.
So, I guess what I'm suggesting is that, I'm asking you if it would be all right with you to broaden this a bit, to talk about a case manager for students with special needs and not limited to just looking at.
Oh, sure. That's fine.
Because I just think that that's a.
That's fine.
Right. Honestly, if you could say feasibility of additional special education supports at the elementary school.
Right, because there already are case managers at the elementary schools.
Right. If we take the broad thing of supports, we can figure out case manager, IAs, teachers, additional administrators, and then bring you what the package would look like.
Okay. So, again, being mindful of time, I didn't feel that the need, we had to read through every one of them, because I thought my, I thought that the new approach we're doing is, we list out the next steps. Basically, Superintendent Brabran says, if they have any questions, they'll circle back with the Budget Chair and Vice Chair to get clarity. But otherwise, most of this is just to give the superintendent guidance as they continue to build and work on the budget development process. So, Ms. Kieske-Mara, you had a question? That's fine. Sure. You go, I know that you and Ms. Corbett Sanders are the two that have the community meeting, and you have to leave. Everyone else, you're not allowed to leave, because we need quorum, and we have staff who are here to present on the next item. And I was assured the rest of you will all be here till 7 o'clock.
So, I don't know if I need to clarify on, I don't see anything on there about the SCIF that was mentioned, those categories that were added. That wasn't one of mine, but I wanted to make sure, let's see. Okay. Someone else mentioned SCIF, but I piggybacked on what their comment was. Okay. And I think her question had to do with adequacy, and was that the flexibility, Dr. Brabran?
So, maybe we could put, providing more flexible programs for older students, including SCIF students for dropout prevention.
Okay. And then. Right. And then, my concern is, was, you know, how we can, I'm concerned, and this may not be the place to mention, but I'll just mention it to you, whether, because I know we have some schools where we have high numbers of these students impacting their numbers, even though those, the students that have been there are doing very well. So, I don't know if there's a way to delineate these students that are coming.
Exactly, exactly.
And so that the community and people looking at great schools, et cetera, are not thinking that that, oh, that school's just terrible.
And that's part of the state flexibility conversation we're looking at.
Okay. So, I just wanted to make sure that was part of the conversation, because I know, I believe that some of our schools that are doing excellent work are being hurt by that particular statistic. are being hurt by that particular statistic, and they cannot be responsible for somebody that showed up senior year. Okay, the, I think there were some other comments with respect to coaching standards. We talked a little, we talked about more than what I saw up there. Training expectations, number of hours, someone else mentioned stipends, and I guess standardization would kind of cover it. And what's, okay, so, I just wanted to make sure that was included. On dropout prevention, I think I added to that also preparation for our students with respect to almost a transitional plan. With, when you have special education students, oftentimes, you prepare a transitional plan for them because they can have an extended period. I'm not sure, I always wonder whether not having, just getting the scores and graduating, is that enough of a discussion for our kids going into the next step?
So, maybe if we could put, under Strauss's 71, providing more flexible programs for older students, including CIF for dropout prevention, and including transition plans for these students.
For not just dropout, but for our kids moving to the next step?
Yeah, for all students.
For the next step, as long as you understand what I'm saying, I don't care. Okay, and then, 74 has average class size decrease over the past two years. I don't think I'm limited to two years, because the investment was for four years.
You know what, could we just, maybe we could even go longer? We could look at the past five or 10, because I think there was an investment in class size by this board, but I'd want to go back and check the year, it was prior to me being here.
Say at least four years, and then you can tell us what you're talking about.
Okay, we'll say at least four.
Okay, and I think, I think those were the comments that I had. If anybody had questions about what I put up there. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Kies-Kamar.
I am nothing if not timely.
If we could go back up to number 68. So, I do not see from my notes, Ms. Corbett Sanders had very specifically said that she wanted us as a board and a division to consider a budget line item for improving our major maintenance. That we've got to have a more robust placeholder. As she noted, some organizations have a percent of their overall budget that's protecting and ensuring sufficient funds for major maintenance. So, I want to make sure that one's there. And then, Ms. Evans, did we cover sufficiently the issue of a per pupil funding for extracurricular? On the budget follow-on motions?
Yeah, I mean, I made other comments about those things, but at this point, you know, what we've asked for as a next step is a status update on when we're going to see, when we're going to see it and what direction they're going in. So, I just wanted to get more details, actually on all of them, but on those two in particular.
Okay.
So, I think that captures what I was asking for as a next step at this point.
All right, has everyone else read through there to see if they felt that the areas of focus that they wanted? Did we at least capture that multiple board members were all talking about middle school start times? I mean, even though we know that's a follow-on motion, I want to put that sort of front and center as the budget staff's working on things to know that it's going to, I mean, at minimum, it might be that we, when we use Children's National Medical Center, we may not need to go to that depth, but we're going to need someone to work with Mr. Plattenberg's shop to figure out what is that going to do to our schedules?
I mean, we could just say, address the next step on, provide timely update on next step around middle school start times. We're working on this, we're pulling together options, we are.
And I've identified in the past that I wasn't sure whether they're able to disaggregate data, student achievement data, attendance, stuff out of BHMS, the bullying and harassment management system of students who are in the middle schools at secondary schools, who have the advantage, they had the disadvantage forever of having to go early. Now, they have the advantage of going late. And if there is anything that we can glean from the fact that we have three stable schools of middle schools who are going to school later, and it may be evidentiary for us to justify whatever this is going to cost, because there could be, we know discernible data that shows that there are advantages for our middle school students to go later.
And then, I do want to make sure, as Mr. Wilson, you raised an extremely important point, that putting front and center for our staff about just overall special education concerns, whether it's the staffing ratios, the rapid response team, restraint and seclusion, is that listed there? All right, we need that list. Direct staff to examine special education concerns? I'm not done yet. So, related to wrap the restraint and seclusion task force with potential costs associated with that work? Rapid response team? And then, Mr. Wilson, you had said staffing ratios. I don't know if you want additional context that'll help?
Yeah, and maybe in some of the earlier next steps that was picked up, because we, I think Dr. Brabran's, he already actually talked exactly about what I was talking about, is be having some more flexibility at the elementary school level in particular with the staffing ratios in special education classrooms. But I think, I think from my perspective, the biggest thing is that we need a category. I mean, we have a category for advanced academics and a lot of other different categories. And I think this board needs to have a category for special education to show our commitment to that community. And there's a laundry list, I'm sure, if we all put our heads together, of things that the special education community has brought to our attention. I just gave a few off the, right off the top of my head of what I had brought up, and specifically, having an ability to embed specialists to deal with, you know, very serious situations. But even that topic is bigger, because what we need is a culture that allows the classroom teachers who are struggling to feel confident that they can come forward and not, you know, be, you know, critiqued on their review or feeling like they might be critiqued. So, we have to build a culture of trust that allows teachers to come forward. And then, we need to, you know, have the ability to come and support them. And I think that's, I mean, it's hard to put all that into a next step. It's not really a next step, it's really our commitment by putting a category up there to talk about all of these issues that we, that have kind of come on to the, emerged through the last year, year and a half, that we need to talk about as a board.
Right, so, Mr. Wilson, I think you captured it well. We have operational needs, and there will be some costs associated with it. And what that will be will depend on how they decide to start addressing those. So, I do also want to see that we had captured, several board members made notes about behavioral intervention specialists. I would just want to make sure that we're, we added some of those in the last budget, but for the superintendent and your team's consideration, how are we doing on that? Is that going to be an area of focus for additional staffing needs going into the next fiscal year budget development?
If you could just include and BITs, or behavioral intervention teachers, that'll be helpful as a reminder. And we're looking at that.
I don't see the one piece, although maybe it's already in the queue and doesn't need to be here, about the at least halftime workers who don't get benefits.
No, that's, it was absolutely something you raised, Ms. Evans, and I didn't, I don't think I saw that there.
Yeah, that would just be getting details of...
Review, review the benefit status for our part-time?
Well, for the, you know, get more, provide more information on the 500-plus employees who work for us halftime and don't receive benefits.
Okay, all right, so, we are now at 6:05. So, we did that within two hours as planned. And so, we'll just have a brief transition to the second work session. And I want to thank staff for your help with this budget work session.
We'll take a 30-minute recess.